Thank you very much. Good morning. Welcome to the Growth Infrastructure Waste Committee Agenda for Thursday 10 November 2022. The first thing I will do is pass on for a... to acknowledge attendance. I look around the room. There is myself, the Deputy Mayor, councillor Madsen, councillor Ireland, councillor Johny, councillor Tully, councillor Doyle, councillor Fekno, councillor Milligan and councillor Kuncelmann. So everyone is here. We'll now move on to acknowledgement of country. Councillor Kuncelmann?
We recognise that there are traditional custodians of this land on which we meet today to make important decisions. The spirit of those traditional custodians is with us today as we try to make the best decisions on the use of that land. We pay respects to those traditional custodians, acknowledging past and present leaders and the encouragement of new leaders as they emerge.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to declarations of interest in matters on the agenda. Are there any declarations on matters on the GOW? Councillor Tully, yes?
Thanks, Mayor. This is a precautionary declaration to...
A precautionary, did you say?
Precautionary, yeah. That word's not in the act, but I think people will understand. It's in relation to item three about the Ipswich General Cemetery and then accordance with section 150 EQ of the Local Government Act 2009, I councillor Paul Tully informed the meeting that I may have a declarable conflict of interest in that item. The nature of the declarable conflict is that I'm a trustee of the Goodness Cemetery Trust appointed by the Governor in council. It's a very minor connection, if any, between the two cemeteries. But just as a precautionary issue, I declare that I don't plan on speaking to the matter, but I put it to the committee to consider my position and whether I can stay and vote.
Yep. I guess I just asked, councillor Tully, is there a reason why you think there's a conflict? Do they compete or is there any advantage to you in the matter that's before us today?
No, there's no personal advantage. It's a community trust cemetery. I doubt there'd be any competition in that sense. I've been a member of the trust for perhaps over forty years now. It's just precautionary, given all the circumstances and any sort of suggestion. There's no remuneration or any other personal benefit to me.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions of councillor Tully on that declaration of interest?
Excuse me, Chair. Sorry, I've left some of my notes in my office. I will need to go and collect them.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions? I might just hold on before I move forward a motion on that, if that's okay with the rest of the council? On this, councillor Ireland?
Mayor, I seek your advice. It's not an out...
Is it on this matter that's before us?
Well, it's to do with the opening prayer. I just wanted to make a suggestion. Is it...
So that's on another matter? Can I just ask you to wait?
I just thought it might have filled in some time.
This is a committee meeting, so there's no opening prayer. We're only doing that for the ordinary council meeting.
Thank you very much. Good morning. Welcome to the Growth Infrastructure Waste Committee Agenda for Thursday, the 10th of November 2022. The first thing I will do is pass on for a... to acknowledge attendance. I look around the room. There is myself, the Deputy Mayor, councillor Madison, councillor Ireland, councillor Johnny, councillor Tully, councillor Doyle, councillor Fekno, councillor Milligan and councillor Kuncelman. So everyone is here. We'll now move on to acknowledgement of country. Councillor Kuncelman?
We recognise that there are traditional custodians of this land on which we meet today to make important decisions. The spirit of those traditional custodians is with us today as we try to make the best decisions on the use of that land. We pay respects to those traditional custodians, acknowledging past and present leaders and the encouragement of new leaders as they emerge.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to declarations of interest in matters on the agenda. Are there any declarations on matters on the GOW? Councillor Tully, yes?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. This is a precautionary declaration to...
A precautionary, did you say?
Precautionary, yeah. That word's not in the act, but I think people will understand. It's in relation to item three about the Ipswich General Cemetery and then accordance with section 150 EQ of the Local Government Act 2009. I, councillor Paul Tully, informed the meeting that I may have a declarable conflict of interest in that item. The nature of the declarable conflict is that I'm a trustee of the Goodness Cemetery Trust appointed by the Governor-in-Council. It's a very minor connection, if any, between the two cemeteries. But just as a precautionary issue, I declare that I don't plan on speaking to the matter, but I put it to the committee to consider my position and whether I can stay and vote.
Yep. I guess I'll just ask, councillor Tully, is there a reason why you think there's a conflict? Is, do they compete or is there any advantage to you in the matter that's before us today?
No, there's no personal advantage. It's a community trust cemetery. I doubt there'd be any competition in that sense. I've been a member of the trust for perhaps over forty years now. It's just precautionary, given all the circumstances and any sort of suggestion. Yeah, there's no remuneration or any other personal benefit to me.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions of councillor Tully on that declaration of interest?
Excuse me, Chair, sorry, I've left some of my notes in my office. I will need to go and collect them.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions? I might just hold on before I move forward a motion on that, if that's okay with the rest of the council? On this, councillor Ireland?
Mayor, I seek your advice. It's not an...
So is it on this matter that's before us?
Well, it's to do with the opening prayer. I just wanted to make a suggestion.
So that's on another matter? Can I just ask you to wait?
I just thought it might have filled in some time.
This is a committee meeting, so there's no opening prayer. We're going to do that for the ordinary council meeting. Yep. Oh, okay. Okay, thank you. I'll just hold. I'd be wanting to put forward to move that councillor Paul Tully participates and votes on item three entitled the Ipswich General Cemetery Heritage Project Final Concept Design because there's no personal financial benefit to councillor Tully and therefore a reasonable person would trust that the final decision is made in the public interest. Do I have a second for that, councillor Kuncelman? I'll leave it open for discussion. No discussion. I'll put that matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous in the room noting that councillor Tully hasn't voted. Thank you very much. Are there any other declarations of interest? No, thank you. We'll move on then to item one, which is the updated heritage study to assist and inform the new Ipswich planning scheme. And we have before us the report here. And it's recommended that this report be received and noted, noting that this report is addressing parts A and B of the notice of motion. I might just look to, since councillor, it was your notice of motion, do you wish to move it at all? You'd like to move that? And do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Tully. I'll leave it open for any discussion in moving it. Okay. In that case, may I have the relevant council officer come to the lectern, please?
Good morning. Brett Davy, Manager City Design.
Thank you, Mr Davy. Councillor Doyle?
Thank you, Mr Davy, for the very comprehensive report. I just have a couple of queries. So firstly, in relation to the Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander Heritage Places under option five, can I just clarify, I note under the 2016 Planning Act, it is actually a requirement that the schemes do now identify and, you know, recognise, protect and promote the knowledge and culture of Aboriginal people and their connection to the land. Our planning scheme obviously predates 2016. However, we have had some amendments over the years. Do any of our amendments speak to or address provisions around Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander cultural heritage places?
With the current scheme, not specifically. The benefit of the current scheme, though, is there was effort made to recognise Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander places in the heritage registers or the schedules of the scheme, so there is some protection afforded there. So by default, in a way, we'd comply with those provisions. Certainly with the new scheme, we need to further those provisions to make sure that the scheme does comply with the legislation and recognise, most importantly, Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander interests. There is still some work to be done there, though, and I feel that in that space, we do need to make some considered effort with a future amendment of the draft scheme to actually properly engage with the native title organisations and Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people to understand the values that we want to incorporate into the scheme and maybe get a better understanding of assets and sites that are of significance because I understand there have been previous efforts made to identify further sites for the scheme, but that hasn't been successful. But again, it hasn't been addressed for quite a long time in a considered way and now we have a new Indigenous accord. There's a lot of work on building a relationship with council and those groups. I think the time is coming for us to spend some effort on that.
Yeah. So I know, I think it's Longreach Council did a significant amendment to their planning scheme because they predated the current planning act. Is it amendment to our existing scheme an option, do you think? I know we're underway with our work on the new planning scheme, but I'm just conscious of the time it may take and the approvals required from the state government. When we think about the time that it would take to do an amendment to the existing scheme, is that feasible or probably adds no value?
I would suggest that to do an amendment to the current scheme wouldn't bring controls in too much faster than actually doing a considered engagement programme with the new scheme. The other benefit we have at the moment is if we move through to engagement phase on the current draft planning scheme, there is an opportunity for these issues to be further explored and submissions made by the community on elements that may be omitted or improvements that could be further made. We could, of course, fund an exercise to amend the scheme, but I would estimate you're talking probably to do it properly in the order of one to two years for this type of exercise. So theoretically, that doesn't come in until, you know, 2024. Planning scheme comes into 2024 as well. We'd then have a new scheme that doesn't deal with the matters in the same way that an amended current scheme would. So I would suggest you are better off for longevity and to do it properly to schedule it with the new scheme.
Okay, thank you. On page 15 of your report, under interim control measures, I just want to clarify the final paragraph. You say it's really important to note that there is no immediate way to protect a building from demolition or removal if it is not already protected in a planning policy or by legislation. If we were to, under our existing scheme, add a property to schedule two or three, is that suggesting we can't or that there's no retrospective protection?
So there are two scenarios at play. So if you've got a property that's of significance, but it's not listed in any register, whether it's state or local, there really isn't an easy way to protect it quickly. To protect that property, you would need to do a temporary local planning instrument, which would take some time, and then that would bring it into a schedule two or a schedule three and offer it some protection. You would take however long it would take to actually get that temporary local planning instrument in place and then in that time, it could have been demolished if there was a, you know, a willing party to remove that property before we got the controls in place. If it's already in a register, then our powers are stronger. There are provisions under the Heritage Act, for example, to allow councils to go and take action and give direction notices to improve properties, but it doesn't necessarily prevent that, you know, neglect or even it doesn't necessarily prevent the demolition of that property. It gives us actions to be able to take if those properties are wantonly demolished without seeking approvals.
And so my next question was around demolition by neglect, which is the concept known whereby an owner of a property intentionally or not neglects the property. We see a lot of senior residents, I guess. The home falls into disrepair and they don't have the financial means to undertake the required repairs. But very separately to that, I'd like to think it doesn't happen often, but there are examples of where it's intentionally done potentially by a developer. And when we think about what protection, what levers we can pull, I know at both state and local level, we have our Planning Act, our planning scheme and our Queensland Heritage legislation, but that only takes us so far. We are relying to a certain extent on the owners of the property to also do the right thing. But if we turn our mind to the levers we can pull, I am aware several years ago, the ability for a local government to issue a notice of maintenance or repair amendments were made. Do we, is that correct? And do we do that here at Ipswich City Council? Have we done that? What does that look like?
Yeah, there were amendments made to the Heritage Act to afford similar powers to councils as is afforded to the state in being able to give a direction notice essentially to an owner and suggest they need to do rectification works to a premises. To my knowledge, we've never used those provisions. I'm certain it's been discussed internally and thinking it through. Certainly, it's an option that's available to us. I don't think it's very frequently used at a state level either. You're right, it's, most of the properties and the stock we have are privately owned and so in the circumstances that you would use that, you're issuing a notice to a property owner that may or may not have the capacity to address those issues. And then you've got to ask yourself the question, once you start down that path, how far do you pursue that? Do you continue to the point of taking legal action against the property owner for not maintaining their property appropriately? So we spend quite a bit of time in a reactive way with our heritage advisor program to be able to help people understand some of the opportunities that arise from owning character properties and their ability to maintain them. But we are mindful that not everyone has the capacity to do it or the capability. People don't understand when they buy a character home that the beauty of it requires that constant vigilance and if they're unaware and they're not handy themselves, they'll often inadvertently do things that damage the property.
Okay, that's all from me, I think.
Thank you. Councillor Tully, did you have some questions? Mr Davy?
Yeah, just one question. Thank you. In relation to the criteria, this is on page 13 of the report. Option three or issue three about the specific review of schedule three assets, I take it that's looking at all of the assets and to review them from start to finish. But could I suggest that we also put in words along the following lines, including a review of the related assessment criteria in respect of a development application? The purpose for that is that the recent matter that arose, there were assessment criteria, but there was something else historically in another part of the provisions that prevented, as we were advised, that, that is the preservation of the building being considered as part of the assessment criteria. So what I was going to suggest, that those words that are added and specifically, I note the report doesn't include those specific matters, but to add the words at the end of the clause three there at the top of page 13, including a review of the related assessment criteria in respect of a development or of development applications, probably plural. That would cover that specific issue, I think.
Yeah, it certainly would broaden the scope of that exercise, but we can consider that. Just something to note with the draft scheme that we have done a review of the, or taken a review of schedule three to see whether or not there are properties that warrant elevation to schedule two. We haven't fundamentally changed the type of criteria in the draft scheme that we'd applied to decision-making on those things and that's something that maybe the community can provide us some feedback on when we go to notification. In the decision-making, it's not that we've tried to protect every single thing that's pre-46. You know, like anything, particularly with town planning, it's a balancing exercise between competing demands and certainly with schedule three and the example you cited, councillor Tully, there was a decision made in the past to balance demands in a particular way. We can certainly relook at that balance and that's maybe part of the workshopping exercise we consider next year. It's part of the balance of this resolution or the resolution of which this matter relates so that we can make sure that that balancing exercise has the right consideration, I suppose.
As I understand it, it was advised to us that with amendments that were made in relation to the assessment criteria, the other provision later on in the documentation that referred to the number one priority, using my words, was to the protection of continuation or preservation of schedule three properties, but that wasn't translated back into the assessment criteria. So, yeah, no, that's fine. I understand exactly what you're saying. So at the appropriate time, Mayor, I'll just move an amendment to include those additional words. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Tully. Any other questions of Mr Davy? Yes, councillor Fekno?
Thanks, Mr Davy. I just want to revisit your comments around Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander cultural heritage places. I kind of got lost in the timeline when you were answering councillor Doyle's question around the inclusion of that in the new scheme. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, but I take it that there is no opportunity for us to significantly amend for state interest checks to happen, but we could start the community consultation on a project like this when we roll out our community consultation with the scheme. Is that what you were saying?
Yes. So we've got two options. We could commence a process of amending the current scheme. That would probably take a year or two. By the time that's completed, the new scheme will take effect in 2024. So there's, in my opinion, there is no purpose in doing that. We should put the energy into the draft scheme. In respect to the legislation change and the requirements for the state interest check, we will certainly comply with the state interest. That's our desire. But like anything, you can just achieve something or you can go above and beyond. And so that's, I think we should be putting effort into going above and beyond in this space as well as the balance of our heritage program. Look at both rather than just look at one in isolation.
Well, we have to amend our engagement plan for the scheme to include a discreet piece of work with regards to cultural heritage matters?
I've already provided for that in our plan for engagement to actually address those interests in a little bit more gusto and to put some time and energy into our engagement programming with specific objectives to better engage with our Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander interests.
And of course, there's always an opportunity for the community to have their say on the new draft planning scheme next year and those additional comments, thoughts, feelings and aspirations can be captured in that feedback from the community as well.
Yes, yeah. And there'll certainly be things that come from the community that we can incorporate into the scheme before it's finalized. There's other things that may not be the balanced interest or there might be other things, again, which are a major thing that are important, but we might put them aside and say that's going to form a future amendment. So that's important. And as councillor Tully described, in terms of the language of the scheme, it kind of highlights the importance of people looking at it now. It's too late. Once a scheme's in, you go, oh, actually, I didn't realise a set of units could be built beside me. Similarly, with the heritage program, the planning scheme specifically was amended many years ago so that schedule two and schedule three had different criteria that apply to them with an objective that schedule three could be relocated. And that's the crux of this issue, that one of the issues we're dealing with at the moment. You know, if the desire is that all of those schedule three places go to schedule two, for example, that's okay, but that has other implications on land use objectives. So we need to consider that balance. And we need the community to understand that when we're making this decision that, you know, if a property that you'd walk past every day and you love should be listed, then you need to let us know. Now, if we've missed it for some reason, that's great, we'll include it. If we've left it off for a specific reason, we might still leave it off, but we need to consider the rationale for that.
Thank you, Mr Davy.
Thank you. Any other questions, Mr Davy? No, thank you very much, Mr Davy.
Thank you.
I'll go back to the mover of this. Councillor Doyle, do you wish to speak any further on this? No motion?
Lot to achieve and I know it is very ambitious and there's budgetary considerations to do the enormous piece of work around, you know, built heritage and just as importantly, our Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander heritage. However, it should be a priority in my personal opinion. So I'm keen for the workshop and to have robust discussions with my fellow colleagues about the timing and inclusion and the budgetary constraints. But I am also eager for the workshop because I think in the meantime, there are some things we can be doing differently or better. I raised the amendments to the Queensland Heritage Act several years ago where we can actually issue a notice of repair and maintenance. And it's my personal opinion that potentially we need to start doing that. But again, that comes down to compliance, compliance officers, FTEs and budgets. So looking forward to having those discussions about what interim levers we can put in place.
Thank you, councillor. And as a second, councillor Tully, would you like to make any comments?
Yeah, I'll just, yeah, I think that's a pretty expansive comment on the challenge before us in relation to this. I note that the actual recommendation on page nine is to receive and note the report. And it's a pretty comprehensive report, but I'll just email the committee clerk to add the words.
Yes.
At the end of that, including a review of the assessment criteria in respect of, sorry, I'll just, in respect of development applications involving Schedule III listings. Let's read that again, including a review of the assessment criteria in respect of development applications involving Schedule III listings.
So are you looking to add that to recommendation C, or is it a separate recommendation?
No, that's the summary. The actual recommendation before us is at the top of page nine.
Yes.
Which is just to receive and note that it's a bit of an unusual situation, just to receive and note the report with.
Well, that's quite, that is quite common. But I'm suggesting maybe we make it as a recommendation D perhaps? Would that be more effective?
No, the point I'm making is that that A to C on page eight is not part of the recommendation before us today.
That's right. So Chair, if I may.
Yes, please.
I had thought that we possibly need to amend to include a bit more structure around the proposed, or introduce the concept of the workshop and the items we'd like to see addressed as part of the recommendation and by a certain date.
So at the moment, the recommendation is just to receive and note the report as the mover. And second, you would like to change that particular recommendation?
Well, I'll put one proposal forward, but I agree with the mover that we probably need a little bit more as well.
Okay.
Okay. So that, a workshop?
So recommendation C, the workshop?
No.
No, no, it's just a recommendation.
In the executive summary, there is a C, provide a workshop to councils in early twenty twenty three with a view.
That's what we resolved.
I realise, I realise that was part of the no submersion.
Yeah.
But I'm saying, do we cut and paste that as the recommendation?
Thank you. That's a good idea. Yeah, let's start with that. Formulating council's position approach, amendments into the new scheme, resourcing. Can we add at the end of the sentence?
That that workshop would include the review that Councilor Tully has.
Yeah, to include interim measures. Interim protection measures under the existing scheme. Available to council. Workshop to include a discussion regarding interim protection measures.
Yep. Shall we make that as recommendation A, and then what Councilor Tully has moved as a recommendation B perhaps? Would that be cleaner?
And then within the discussion on interim protection measures, that's where we could potentially add Councilor Tully's, the further analysis or examination he wants, or consideration.
So should B be that a report be received and noted? That a report? Councilor Tully?
No, it's this report.
The report.
The report. That the report be received and noted, including a review of, but you're after something else. Including a review of assessment criteria in respect of development applications involving Schedule III listings. So you're after, what's the end result that you're after? Another report or?
No. Can I suggest that the, the, those words, that the report be received and noted, become paragraph A? Receive and note the report. What Councilor Doyle has moved in, becomes para.
Recommendation B?
B, and that a C, that to read that the workshop also consider a review of the assessment criteria.
Yeah, I agree.
Et cetera, yeah.
And Chair, if I may, back to B, could I just amend slightly? The second last sentence. So addressed and the work. Sorry, line, the second last line. And the workshop will also include.
It should be that workshop will also.
Yeah, that's fine. Now, thank you.
So just to read through, there's A is that the report we received are noted. B, that a workshop be provided to councils in early twenty twenty three with a view to formulating council's position and approach to incorporating major amendments and significant amendments to the new scheme, so that adequate resourcing and budget can be addressed. And the workshop should also include a discussion on the interim protection measures under the existing scheme available to council. And C, the workshop also consider a review of the assessment, that the workshop also consider a review of the assessment criteria in respect of development applications involving Schedule III listings. I'm just checking with the mover and second, if that's how they'd like to.
Just one more perhaps?
Yep.
Where it says in the proposed paragraph, the interim, to add the words and ongoing. So the discussion looks forward to, because we've already heard that, you know, interim measures.
I'll just check with the mover. So after the word interim, have the word and ongoing.
Yes, that's fine, Chair.
Thank you. So I'll just double check with the mover. You're happy with those three?
Thank you, Chair.
Second, thank you. So those are the three motions before us. Thank you. I'll now move on to discussion. And I just want to say that I think the report was really good. And I thank you, Councilor Doyle, for putting forward the no submotion for great explaining options for us as a council. I think it's really good to have Schedule II and III better explained. And I also note that we have the next Ipswich Heritage Network Group on the twenty first of November. So I know that we'll be discussing a number of these items with that very engaged group as well.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Looking forward to the next Heritage Networking Group. And I caught up with my former teacher, Robin Koloran, on the weekend. And yeah, we'll be surprising Graham Koloran, former member of the old Heritage Advisory Panel. We'll get him back to Ipswich here and come along there. Looking forward to it.
Thank you. Any other discussion on recommendations A, B and C? In that case, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. We now move on to the confirmation of the minutes from the Growth Infrastructure and Waste Committee on the thirteenth of October. I'll move those. Do I have a second for those? Thank you, Councilman Wigan. Any discussion? Thank you. I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. We now move on to items on the, on the agenda. And I just want to note that since our new TORs, we've been quite explicitly, where delegations are being exercised under the Planning Act, but also in our local government. But also, things are just a recommendation to council as a normal committee. So we'll move on to item three, which is the.
Mayor, could I just, a point of clarification in relation to that? The decisions made in respect of the Ripley Valley area, is that under the Planning Act? Or is it under separate legislation?
That's a good question.
And if so, would that preclude us from making a decision?
I think the General Manager of Planning and Regulatory Services is coming forward to the lectern to answer that question. Councilor Tully?
Morning, Mayor and councillors. Peter Tabullo, General Manager of Planning and Regulatory Services. Councilor Tully, the Planning Act is under the Local Government Act, described as embracing a whole range of other acts. So it's not just the Planning Act two thousand and sixteen, because there is the planning provisions under the Economic Development and Name Is Case Me Act. So it doesn't matter that we're not explicit in the delegation here. With reference here to decisions being made under each of the planning acts, the fact that we're saying at a broad level would cover the Ripley Valley PDA.
Thank you. The only thing is that it says specifically the Planning Act two thousand and sixteen. So I might ask, it probably can't be resolved today, but if it's as specific as that in the decision already made, perhaps we need broader words such as relevant planning legislation or words to cover every planning, because it is specific to one act.
Yep. Does the Planning Act cover, I would suspect, priority development areas?
Under the Economic Development Act.
Okay.
Well, yeah, that's the point I'm making. I think it just needs a bit of review. So, yeah, thank you.
And if there is a chance, I have to go through our TORs. Yep. Thank you. The other items, matters of recommendation to council. So item three is the Ipswich General Cemetery Heritage Project Final Concept Design. And the recommendation is there that the Ipswich General Cemetery Heritage Protection Final Concept Design Report for the Memorial Garden, including Attachment One, be approved. I'd like to change it from be approved to be noted because there are budgetary implications, which we'll have to go through our budget. So I'll change that last word, be noted. If that's okay? Because we are potentially looking at four and a half million dollars in here.
Sorry, through you, Chair. Are we not just approving the concept design report? Not the actual financial implications?
Yep. I just want to be quite clear because it does talk about four and a half million dollars and that hasn't, we haven't budgeted for that. So I think I was just looking at the fact that we note this particular concept design report.
Just to clarify for everyone at home, I don't believe four and a half million dollars would be spent unbudgeted on this because of the wording of this motion. And, you know, I feel like I have to say that because I don't think four and a half million dollars is spent that way. I've never had that indication from my time at council that that sort of spending is undertaken without appropriate budgeting.
Well, I guess I move that, that we would change that would approve to be noted, but if I don't have a second, we'll just leave it as it is.
Could I suggest, and I understand exactly what's tried to be achieved, but I think this is the concept design. So I think we should make it clear to the community and within the council that we're approving the, and I'm using these words to formulate an amendment, that we approve the concept design, which I think is excellent. And then at the end, to add the words, subject to budgetary approval. Yeah, to make it clear that we approved the design, but it's still subject to budgetary approval.
I'm happy to move that, if that's okay. And you'll second that, Councilor Tully? Thank you. Would anyone like to speak to the relevant council officer on this report? No? I'll move it open for discussion. Is there any discussion? Yes.
Thank you, Chair. Just for clarification, on page thirty, it does say that approximately four million has not been allocated. In light of this information, council will need to consider this programme in forthcoming budget workshops, so.
Yes.
Yeah.
I agree. It's in the body of the document. I just wanted to be really specific, I guess, in that. Thank you, Councilor Johnic. Any other discussion? No, I just, I just want to commend the team. There's been an intense amount of community consultation, but also with the local traditional owners and indigenous population as well. And with families who actually have multiple generation families in Ipswich who have family, you know, family there. Thank you very much to the organisation for the extended community consultation on this. It's a very well done report. Thank you. I put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. Move on to item four, which is the planning and development documentation and search fees. We have two recommendations here. One, that council note the proposed new building and plumbing documents to be offered. And B, that council adopt the proposed fees and charges for approved plans and documentation as outlined in Attachment One with effect from the thirtieth of November two thousand and twenty two. Would anyone like to speak to the relevant council officers on that? No? Okay, I'll move those two recommendations. We have a second for that. Thank you, Councilor Johnic. Any discussion?
Just for you, Chair. I guess this is a really, a nice improvement to the system and how we operate and managing the, the community need going forward and being able to be flexible in how we deliver some of the documents. So I think, yeah.
Agree, Councilor Johnic. I think it's a great idea that we've obviously listened to our residents and people who are building new houses and have responded. So I think it's a great recommendation. Any other discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. We now move on to item five, which is the Infrastructure Environment Department Capital Delivery Report. And the recommendation that the report be received and contents noted. Does anyone have any questions with relevant council officers on this one? No, in that case, I will move that recommendation. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, Councilor Doyle. I'll move into discussion. I guess any discussion, I'll have, I'll thank the organisation. I know whether it hasn't been that kind. But thank you, you're making tremendous progress in our capital delivery programme. And I, again, thank you. And I encourage residents to look at the report, which has pictures and a very succinct report on the work that council is doing, which is a core business for us. I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. I think it's unanimous and carried. Now, we'll move on to the exercise of delegation report. And the recommendation that exercise of delegation report for the period the twenty sixth of September two thousand and twenty two, the twenty fourth of October two thousand and twenty two be received and the contents noted. I'm happy to move that. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, Councilor Doyle. Any discussion on that report? No, I'm putting the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. We now move on to item seven, which is the Planning Environment Court Action Status Report. May I ask for the relevant council officer to come to the lectern, please?
Morning, Mayor and councillors. Mitchell Grant, Acting Manager, Development Planning.
Thank you, Mr Grant. Do you mind giving us an update on the major, about it that we have to hold for the Planning Environment Court with three waste operators?
Yeah, sure. So the three waste applications are, hearings have been concluded for a significant period of time, and we're still awaiting a judgment on those matters.
There's been no movement or anything on that?
Unfortunately, not. No, still waiting for the judgment.
Okay.
Mayor, and likewise with a number of others, with eight of our court action statuses at the moment, waiting judgment.
Okay. The judicial review into the oneless, any, any progress on that?
So the status in the report was that the, there were some written submissions. The written submissions have now been finalised and we're waiting for judgment on that.
Do you have any indication of timeframes on that?
Again, unfortunately not, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Any other questions, Mr Grant? Thank you very much. I'll move that the Planning Environment Court Action Status Report be received and the contents noted. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, Councilor Doyle. Any discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. I think it's unanimous and carried. Thank you. We now move on to notices of motion. Are there any? I'll move to matters arising. There are none. So I will conclude this meeting at nine forty three AM. I know we have another commitment in between under the new terms of reference. I think I can say we'll come back at ten thirty AM.
This committee can't determine the, I think it's ten minutes after.
I thought under the new terms of reference.
Well, if you adjourn this meeting and then reopen in forty five minutes, but that could be considered tried.
Mayor, I think you're referring to the intended changes we have with the calendar for next year. That's not in places yet.
Okay, no worries. Thank you. I'll close this meeting at nine forty three.
Or are we adjourning it?
And, okay. I move that we adjourn this meeting till ten thirty.
I'll happily second.
Thank you. Put that to the vote, those in favour.
Why are we adjourning again? Sorry. I'm not up to speed with what you're talking about, Mayor.
I've been advised that there is a, a commitment that we've, that we have that we've been emailed.
I don't have any knowledge of the commitment that you're talking about, Mayor.
Try and assist to clarify. Only, only if you're amenable, our.
Try and assist to clarify. Only if you're amenable, our media corporate communication and engagement team would like to take a photo of all councillors together, but only if that is convenient to you.
It seems to be in some diaries and not others. That's been in my diary.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Put that to the vote, those in favour. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. See you at ten thirty.
Thank you. Welcome back from the German, it's ten thirty. The Growth Infrastructure Waste Committee will now close the meeting at ten thirty and the next meeting will be on at ten forty. Thank you.